Let me remind you that you have three minutes and three minutes only with which to speak. And I also need to read this, a new announcement. This meeting is being livestreamed over the Internet. It is also a digitally recorded public record. Please identify yourself by name when you speak to the board over at the microphone. Members of the public who wish to make a comment to the board or any staff members who are providing information to the board need to do so at the podium. Okay? All right. We'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
(inaudible)
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And I'd like to invite Reverend Ted Stackpole. He is the pastor of First Assembly of God in Palatka.
Would you bow your heads with me? Let the little children come to me and do not hinder them, for such belongs to the kingdom of heaven. Dear Lord, we thank you for the opportunity to do your work each day with the children of Putnam County. Today I pray for the safety and protection of these children and students. May they be protected from physical harm, may they be protected from emotional harm, may they be protected from mental harm. Be with the teachers and administrators of each school and help them to fall in love with their calling all over again. Let today be like their first day. Give them new dreams, desires, and goals that will carry our students and school district forward. Bring synergy and unity amongst each colleague. Let the outcome of today's meeting bring glory to your name, strength to our school system, and wisdom to all who work together. In the name of Jesus, I pray. Amen.
Thank you so much.
Okay. We'll start our presentations with Ms. Sonya Guy from Jenkins Middle School.
And as Sonya's coming up here, I asked Sonya to be here today. She's not on the original schedule, but I wanted to recognize what Jenkins is doing. She's presenting a play at the Jim Pignato Theater called "What Really Happened When Man Landed on the Moon." So just wanted her to share what the play was about and give us some more information.
Well, I wanted to clear up. My name is Sonya Guy, and I wanted to clear up what actually happened when man landed on the moon. Some of you are under the impression there are certain things that happen. I'm trying to clear it up.[162.12][162.12](laughter) And over here, we have some moonlings, and you'll find when you watch the play, we have moonlings. You probably didn't know about them, but we do have moonlings. And the play takes place with the Apollo 11 mission, when man first landed on the moon. And according to some friends of mine that worked with NASA and worked with the televising of that particular mission, they did have some time when they lost communication with the astronauts. And so I took advantage of that information and wrote a play about it. And my kids and these kids. Now, they normally look like children, but they're actually moonlings, so don't be fooled by their costume today. But we're also working on props. We're working on, my children are building the life support packs that are going to be used in the play. This will be painted, and they'll have the NASA symbol on it. It'll have the American flag. And these children are coming from different schools. Our school, and what better way to tie in science, mathematics, acting, art, all of these things are all tied in together. And I hope that you will come and see our show, and it's February 8th, 9th, and 10th. And I look forward to seeing you there.
What time?
The matinees are at 10 o'clock, and we're having mostly students there, but certainly you big students are welcome to come as well. And then our evening performance, we're only doing one evening performance this year, and that's on Friday night on the 10th, and that's at 7 o'clock.
At Jenkins?
It is at, it is at the Jim Pignato Theater at C.L. Oberthurf Center.
So Luke, are you gonna sing a song?[293.64][293.64](laughter) A song in the twins?
Tess and Terran are.
We also are having, E.H. Miller is coming, and their signing choir. And all of the moonlings are also learning the song "You Are My Sunshine," and that is part of the show. And hopefully, by the time at the end of the show, the people in the audience will know the sign, the sign language for that song as well.
Wonderful.
Coincidentally, yesterday, the last man that walked on the moon passed away, if you remember that, so very timely. Thank you for coming and look forward to seeing the moonlings.
Look forward to seeing all of you. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you so much.[334.31][334.31](applause) Next, we have Mr. Jim Paget from Lift Putnam. He is our executive director.
Incidentally, the first landing on the moon was on my birthday, but I will not tell you what year that was, but just a short while ago. Thank you for the opportunity of letting me appear today and bring you folks kind of up to date on what took place in 2016 with our foundation, Lift Putnam, and also give you a glimpse of what we're planning on doing, hoping to do in this upcoming year. Before I do that, we have one of our board members in the back of the room, one of our esteemed board members, if you will, Tim Kaiser. And Tim, if you would wave, stand up, but please don't speak.[401.12][401.12](applause) You can't get a lawyer, you know, that doesn't want to talk. But Tim's one of our, a very fine lawyer and a man who is very compassionate, not compassionate, but passionate, excuse me, about things he believes in. And he is a very enthusiastic supporter of what we're doing in Lift Putnam, and we're really honored to have him on our board. So before I get to all the boring figures about what we've done and what we want to do, I first want to thank the board and this administration and the prior administration for everything that you've done to help us get going, to help us get a healthy start. When Mr. Douglas incorporated Lift Putnam back about a year ago, we existed in Namon. We didn't have a place to hang our hat. We didn't have any staff. We didn't have any materials. We didn't have anything, no equipment, et cetera, et cetera. But you folks have given us a home, a roof over our head, and then much-needed equipment. And more significantly, you have allowed us to benefit from the hard work of certain people that have volunteered to help Lift Putnam get up and go, get going. There hasn't been an occasion when we have asked someone who's employed by the district for help, that they haven't readily offered it. And I'm not going to try to name all of the people that have been so supportive. I would leave out some. But there are three that have really devoted a tremendous amount of time and effort, and I think they need special recognition. That's Pam Douglas, that's Shannon Wilson, and that is Sharon Cormany.[534.66][534.66](applause)
Shannon wanted to know if you'd repeat her name, this time slower and louder.[541.82][541.82](laughter)
Shannon Wilson. Where's Pam?
Pam's up front.
Hey, Pam.[552.16][552.16](laughter) Anyway, they've done the heavy lifting. Let me tell you that. They have done the heavy lifting. Our board, we have meetings, and we decide what it is that we want them to do, and then they get the tremendous honor of doing all the work, really. And we wouldn't be where we are without your support, but particularly their volunteer work. So, that being said, let me chat with you a little bit about what happened in 2016 and where we would like to go in 2017. About a year ago this time, Mr. Douglas, as I said, got us incorporated. We got our 501(c)(3) approval from the IRS in May of last year. And about that time, at one of our board meetings, we started talking about goals and what sort of goal did we want to set insofar as how much money did we think we could reasonably raise to support our early education pre-K program. Figure was kicked around. $50,000 came out somewhere. And I think it was Tim, Mr. Kaiser, that said, "What about $100,000?" And we kind of, I think everyone sort of rolled their eyes and like, sure, you know, we'll never be able to do that, but why not? So officially, we set our goal insofar as raising money at $100,000. Well, as of today, and this is today's figures, we have deposited right at $77,000. Specifically, $76,997.76, and I guarantee you that figure is right to the penny. Additional good news is that we have another $10,000 that has been awarded but not yet received, which by my calculation will get us to $87,000. And we've got, we're on a fiscal year, just like the school board is, or the school district. It gives us another five months. So I think we're gonna make it. I think we're gonna make it. And like I say, it wouldn't have happened without the people that have volunteered so much of their time and intellect to get this thing done. Now, what have we done with that money? We still have a lot of it in the bank, but we have, as of today, sponsored 32 four-year-old kids to attend the full-day pre-K program in Putnam County. And those 36 sponsorships, excuse me, 32 sponsorships, if you will, are spread among six different elementary schools in the county. Most of those sponsorships have been to South Putnam or to Middleton-Burney, but that's because the particular donor that made such a large gracious gift wanted the money spent there. But it's being well-spent. So, and I can tell you the schools that we have awarded sponsorships to, Middleton-Burney, Melrose, Mellon, Aquila, Interlocken, and James A. Long. We're in contact with the principals of those schools and their staff, and that they know that we have additional funds. So we're in a position to do more sponsorships. If the timing, I realize we're into the second half of the year. I don't know how practical it is to bring kids in. I mean, that's y'all's decision and the school's decision. But we do have additional monies and resources that can be used for even more kids for the year. In 2017, our goal really is to continue what we've been doing, but try to do it perhaps a little bit better. We're gonna continue to speak to any civic club that will have us. We're gonna continue to speak to any governmental agency. Whether they want us to or not, we're gonna be on the agenda to speak to those folks. We're going to stress even more than we have our voluntary payroll deduction program here within the district. And I want to thank the board. Every single board member has signed up and has committed to it. Mr. Surrance, he has. Mr. Douglas has made a very, 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 his law firm has made a very, very generous contribution today to Lift Putnam. So you folks are setting an example for everyone else. And we're gonna take that example to every school, and we're gonna sort of hopefully diplomatically, intactfully twist some arms and get the folks, the administrators at those schools, to do the same thing and set examples for their employees and their teachers and their staff. So we think there's a lot of room for expansion in the voluntary payroll deduction program. We're also, despite my protest, being drug into the modern-day world, we actually are getting a website.[906.01][906.01](laughter) And I'm designing it and putting it all together, and it'll be ready.[912.13][912.13](laughter) No. Alice McGuinness just shamed me into doing it. And she's really a super help on that, and she's being responsible for working on that with some of the folks that she works with. I know they've been working on that for a couple of weeks. Apparently, there's something out there called Facebook, and I understand we're gonna be on Facebook.[937.43][937.43](laughter) We're gonna use Mr. Buckle's face. I thought that would really be a.
Eye-opener.
Yeah. That should get a lot of money.
That wouldn't get a lot of donations, I don't think.
And the superintendent mentioned us looking at something called PayPal. Does that ring a bell, or do I have that wrong? So as I say, we're being drug into whatever this century is. Very recently, I've had some very good conversations, and I think this is the third one that we've had about Lift Putnam, with Mr. Pickens in the State College and Melissa Miller, their general counsel. Joe's given us some very good ideas, some thoughts about some things that we can do, perhaps some collaborative, if I've got that word pronounced correctly, collaborative effort with Forward Putnam and with the Chamber. And we'll be making a presentation to one or both of those groups, you know, in the upcoming months. We have grant applications that are presently pending. I don't know whether, is Danny, did Danny Hood make it? I don't know whether Danny's here or not, but he's one of our board members, and Danny has been very instrumental in applying for grants, or helping us apply for grants. And particularly with United Way, we have a grant application pending with them, and Danny and I, I think we meet with them again tomorrow. That'll be our fourth meeting with United Way, and I think that's going to work out fine for us. There was a few bumps in the road, but I think that we've gotten those cleared up. We went to Jacksonville and met with the Episcopal Children's Services Group, and they're gonna kind of defer to us insofar as the full-day pre-K program, the four-year-olds. We already have over 30, as I said, kids that we're sponsoring, and I think they have considerably less than that. So we're gonna quit duplicating efforts there, and they're gonna let us kind of be the lead dog insofar as United Way is concerned. We've got also grant applications pending with Georgia Pacific and Clay Electric. So as I said earlier, I'm really tremendously optimistic that we're gonna make that goal, and then maybe some. We'd like to further expand our board. We have room for up to 15, according to our charter, and the charter could be changed if we needed to. But we have, by law, room for up to 15, and we presently have eight voting members on our board. So we're looking this year to bring in some new and perhaps younger and more enthusiastic folks than some of these white-haired guys that we have now, white-haired bald guys. Something that I think's really gonna be a lot of fun, be exciting, we are planning, and this committee is being chaired by Joyce Oliver and by Jeanette Wagner, and that is a special fundraising event for later in the year. But it's gonna be something that we haven't seen in Putnam County in quite a while. It's gonna be a dinner, entertainment, speakers of interest, and it's gonna be a cut above your normal, you know, Styrofoam chicken, fried chicken barbecue fundraiser. We want to do something special that will really illuminate what we're doing, that will advertise and promote the foundation. Joe Pickens has offered, if we liked, to help us get a speaker that would be timely insofar as certain educational issues are concerned. So I'm really looking forward to that. I think it's gonna be a lot of fun, and obviously, the purpose is to promote the foundation and to raise some money. So those are some things that we have planned for the upcoming year. I don't really have much more to report at this time.
Madam Chairman?
I got one lingering thought. And I was gonna say, if you have any questions, I'll try to answer.
Well, it's not really a question, but I would like to go on record as saying that I really oppose going into asking our employees for donations, especially, you said, twisting arms. Some of our employees have trouble paying their bills. And I just, you know, if there were a vote on it, I would vote against.
But they could have the option.
Well, but like you said, you're twisting arms, and then all of a sudden, we're gonna have the class with the most donations, and we gotta win, and have you paid yet, Sally? And I don't know. I just personally, sorry, but I am against it personally.
I'm opposed to what I think you're talking about, and that's something that's distasteful, high-pressure, that makes the employee feel uncomfortable and guilty if they don't participate. I'm not talking about that. And I tried to, for me, I didn't use the right words, diplomatically, but just encourage the employee to see the benefit to themselves. It's tax-deductible, and it can go right back to their school. And it is, of course, voluntary, and it can be as little or as much as they like. But, you know, we've had, and we haven't really pushed it, but we've had a pretty healthy response from people that said, "Yeah, I'd like to do that." And we've had people that have donated from $1,000 to $10. So trust us that we're not gonna do anything, I hope, certainly not consciously, that will be in poor taste and make anyone feel uncomfortable. We want them to come away from it feeling good about what they're doing and not feel oppressed in any way. So the lingering thought that I have for today, so much, you know, we've gone through this political season. I'm not talking about local politics, but state and federal and national politics. And early education now is becoming a real hot topic. Pre-K is a hot topic, and so much is being written about it. I've really read a lot since I got involved, and there's so many articles and stuff that people bring me. But, and of course, it all talks about the advantages of early ed and particularly full-day pre-K, which you folks are pursuing. But I found you don't have to go any further than our district right here and our early ed department, Lucy Broski, and all the data that they accumulate and save to demonstrate the advantages of a full-day pre-K program right here in Putnam County. And some really interesting statistics that she shared with me. You know this. I didn't. But whenever a kid gets to kindergarten level, as they're entering kindergarten, they're tested to see if they are kindergarten-ready. I didn't know that. But Lucy's office has the results of that testing, and that testing is broken down by kids who went through a full-day pre-K program before kindergarten, and those kids that didn't have the opportunity to go through the same program. The kids, as they come into kindergarten, that haven't been in the full-day pre-K program, less than 50% of them are tested as ready for kindergarten. For the kids that have been through the full-day pre-program, excuse me, pre-kindergarten program here in Putnam County, those kids, 95% to 100% of them are tested as kindergarten-ready. And you say, "Well, how does it vary? It varies school by school." And that's why I say 95% to 100. You have some elementary schools that literally every kid that is tested that's been through the program and had the experience is kindergarten-ready. And the worst, in this particular, was 95%. So obviously, you don't have to be the proverbial rocket scientist to see what it does to these kids, and you can track it right on to the third grade. Those kids that, again, have gone through the early pre-K program, the full-day pre-K stint, if you will, they're much more likely to do better on their third-grade reading tests than the kids that didn't get the experience. And you just keep following it, obviously right on through their school experience, and then you start talking about graduation, graduating on time, graduation rates, and hours are improving. And that's wonderful. We're still next to last, but we're getting better. So I leave you with this thought. Wouldn't it be fantastic if every four-year-old child in Putnam County could go through the full-day pre-K program for free? Every kid, every four-year-old, for free? Now, wonderful idea. I think everyone would agree to that. How do you pay for it? I think everybody here in this room would say, should, if the question was asked, "Should we do that? Would you like to do that?" Yeah! How are you gonna pay for it? How are you gonna pay for it? That's the challenge. Where there's a will, there's a way. And I think that our group, you know, is keenly interested in this. I think we'd like to study it. I think we'd like to come back and meet with you folks, maybe in a workshop setting, and talk about it. Mr. Douglas said, when he formed this organization, he said, "Hopefully, it will reach for the stars." Charlie, I remember you saying that at a board meeting. To me, that's reaching for the stars. And over the years, I've gotten tired, and I know many in this room, if not everyone in this room, has gotten tired of hearing, "We can't do that. We're poor. We're too poor to do that. Woe is me. I'll never amount to anything because I can't." Well, we can. We just gotta, we just gotta get going a little bit and be willing to think and make some sacrifice. If we could do that, we'd be the only school district in the state of Florida that had a program like that.
Mr. Paget, do we have any numbers? In other words, how many kids are in kindergarten in the county? And then we'd know how many four-year-olds.
I don't know if Lucy's here, but last year, I think we enrolled at the beginning, and I think that was last school, 900.
Kindergarten.
Kindergarten.
Because if we want to do every four-year-old, a kindergarten count will kind of give us a count of four-year-olds.
I think we had 900 enrolled in kindergarten a year ago. I don't know what.
Yeah, well, that's close enough.
Yeah. And we had like 300 kids among all of the elementary schools that were in pre-K.
A third.
Right. And because they don't, some of them don't have the money.
They can't afford it.
And it's not required.
It makes such a difference that.
It does.
We've got to continue to work and, you know, use our heads to do this. I was, I met the realtor earlier that I think Mrs. Crawford will be introducing, and I wanted to make sure that as we enter this agreement, we don't bind ourselves that we can't, maybe if the superintendent had a recommendation to take this Campbell Building and make some other kind of matching offer, that we're not bound with them in any way. So Charlie, I don't know where we'll be with that, but you never, you never know. I'm just saying, there are a lot of opportunities to try to find a million dollars.
Oh.
And there, you know, it's just things that I've talked to Rick about, and I've mentioned to Charlie, and I mentioned to Mr. Paget. So just as we're, as we proceed in this process, we don't know what they're going to find out, but as you contact the Gates Foundation and other organizations, we may, we may come up with something really good.
Again, if you have some questions.
I'd just like to say something. I think part of the reason that pre-K4 is so successful in Putnam County is because of Lucy Broski and her staff.
Amen.
And the teachers that she hires and the trainings that they get. I don't think it would be as wonderful as it is. Lucy, would you stand up, please? Are you standing up?[1759.21][1759.21](laughter) Lucy has just been such a blessing to Putnam County.[1766.15][1766.15](applause) And I just, I think this is wonderful, because pre-K has always been very special to me, and.
They have been so cooperative, and Lucy particularly. You asked her, "Do we have any figures along this?" Yeah, we've got them, and I get a stack of stuff on my desk, you know, within a day or two.
It's Johnny on the spot.
And then she has to explain to me how to read it and interpret it. But they have been tremendously supportive and helpful, and we got so many good people, you know, in this, among you. And again, we thank you for your support and. And again, we thank you for your support and doing what you've done to help us get off the ground and get going.
And I wanna thank Mr. Padgett, 'cause I've seen him diligently motivated, not giving up and not.
He's always working on it.
And I do appreciate that, 'cause without that, pre-K would not be the same. We've really impacted kids' lives, so thank you, Mr. Padgett, again, for all you do.
Thank you for the update.
Thank you.
Okay, next is our public comments section. I have three public comments, were there any others turned in? Okay, we're gonna start with Pastor Ty Fields, representing Operation Triple Threat. And let me remind you that you have three minutes, Mr. Reverend Fields.
Yes, ma'am. I'm putting the information up on my tablet.
Okay.
Good afternoon to the superintendent, and to the board, and to the great citizens of Putnam County. I won't be before you long, and like I said, I will speak a little fast because I only have three minutes, but if you have any questions, just stop me, and I definitely know how to stop, amen. My pro, I came to you this, this afternoon to speak about my program, Operation Triple Threat. We serve in nine schools in Putnam County. We are in contact with around 250 youth throughout the schools. We are very involved in the community of Putnam County, from feeding the homeless to community cleanups, et cetera. We mentor 24/7. We take these kids on tours, college visits, college camp tours, ACT, SAT prep, tutoring. And not only do we go to the kids respective schools, we go to their homes and speak with their parents also. We spend around 60 to 70 hours a week in the schools and the community. I remind you that all of this is free. Every year, we host a banquet, and last year, we hosted a banquet that hosted around 150 kids and parents there. And all of this is free. And I say that because what we get out of it is a perfect example. A young man that I ran into had some issues in school, and he told his parents and the people that he wanted to kill himself. And they got him all kinda helping, tried to put him in a program, and it still didn't work. They asked me to go and sit and talk with the young man. I went and talked with the young man, I went to his house and talked with the young man, talked with the young man's parent. And so, for a couple of weeks, we met three, four times a week, and I talked with him daily. So, they asked the young man, they said, have you changed your mind? The young man said, yes, I have, and they asked him why. He said, because I look forward to meeting with Pastor Fields every week. Now, with that being said, today is not about Operation Triple Threat, it's not about Pastor Ty Field, Sr. This is about Ty Field the person. I truly value the hard work that I put in to build a name for myself, as well as my program, Operation Triple Threat, to a place where it's no longer associated with my past. With that being said, I have been wrongfully accused, blatantly lied on, with malicious intent to harm. It was said that I was involved in an incident at James A. Long involving kids unsup, involving leaving kids unsupervised. That's not true. It was said that I was being mean to staff. That's definitely not true. I repeat that again, that's definitely not true. I got a phone call saying that I could no longer volunteer in any schools in Putnam County. There was an email sent to all the schools on Friday saying that the volunteer status of Titian Ty Fields is not approved at any level. That's not true. I've been approved every year on all levels since I got here in 2013. With this being said, I sent an email stating that I have been wrongfully accused and that I am requesting a hearing with all parties involved regarding this matter. I got a response back saying, Mr. Fields, if you are employer of the Putnam County School District, you will be entitled to request a hearing. However, since you are not an employer of the district, we will not grant this request. Respectfully to Tom Bowlin, all I'm asking for in this matter is due process, that is it. And with that being said, I still love the people here, all the people here. I think Putnam County is a great place, and it would be even greater when we all decide to come together and love one another, no matter how situations like this make us feel. And in more the words of the great Martin Luther King Jr., we have to decide to stick with love, because hate is too, a greater, greater burden to bear. Thank you.
Reverend Fields, our board attorney, Mr. Douglas would like to respond.
Thank you for your comments. I just would let the board know that all policies and procedures are being followed in this matter, and I would ask the board members to reserve comment until that is completed because of legal considerations.
Because what then?
Legal considerations.
Okay. Thank you, thank you. So, this is, excuse me, but this is in the works in our system? Okay, that's great, okay.
You say this is in the works in your system?
That's what she asked.
Okay, so, but I can make this very simple for you, because I do believe that, I know the work that I do, and wherever I go and do work, I'm sent by God, because trust me, if it wasn't God, the hours I put in in these schools and in this community would not be for free. So, my thing is, Putnam County, school board, and I respect all of you, you know I do. If you don't want my program in your schools, just say it, and I'm fine with that. But when you come for my name, which I've worked hard to build, then that's a different matter. Forget the legal thing, if you don't want it, just say it, and I'll move on. Trust me, I will. You have no issues out of me, because the name I built for myself, these kids come to me out of the schools. So, what I'm saying, if Putnam County does not want a program that has helped their kids since 2013, and you can see the difference, all you gotta do is talk to your leaders in your school, which are your principals. There is a difference. If you don't want the program, just say it. Just don't defame my name with malicious lies and things like that. That's all I ask. That's all I ask, we don't, we, that's all I ask. I'm not here to start any troubling record, but I'm not gonna allow anybody to defame my name and attach it with lies and things like that, because that's not me.
Thank you so much for speaking with us.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have our friend, Mr. McKinley Evans, who will speak to us about Crescent City High School. And I'll remind you, you know, three minutes.
I'm gonna take a minute, excuse me, I'm gonna take a minute to tell you about that three minutes.
It's board policy, I know.
That's okay, that's okay, that's fine. I'm gonna take one minute just to tell you about that three minutes.
Okay.
You know, everybody's time is valued around here and everything. And I've been sitting in these meetings and sitting in these meetings, and I have to sit there, and I have other places to go, and I still sit there, and y'all come up with a lot of stuff that's not pertaining to the meeting that no need to be talking about in the meetings. You just, you know, like, hey, my grandkids in such and such a thing, I'm going to my grandkid this evening, and all kinds of stuff like that. So, you know, when y'all talk like that, instead of going through the minutes and stuff like you need to be or whatever, that's wasting my time, too. But I'm gonna give you, now, that took up one of my minute, I'm gonna take the other two as needed be.
I'll start it now, that's fine. You still have three minutes.
Go ahead, Mr. McKinley.
One is that I just wanna thank y'all for allowing me to speak, and thank everybody for being in here. But I'm gonna talk right straight to the point. We are here to say that the people of South Putnam would like for the school board to look in and inspect why the, why the high school football coach is being fired. We would like for y'all to really investigate this, or why the high school coach is being fired. It can't be about me, about the winning and the losses, because he has the best record out of all the other athletic departments. He has the best record out of all the other athletic departments. Now, I'm not gonna read all this here to you, because I have all the stats, but I can tell you where you can go pick up the stats at. And that's at maxprep.com, or you can go to the Crescent City High School web and follow the prompts and see it on, you have the best records. Out of that, out of the five years that Coach Smith been to the school, he's had 21 kids to go to college, 21. That's more than all, everybody at that school put together. This is, you gotta be, check this out. It's got 21 kids to go to college. Why in the world would you not want this guy coaching? I have a petition here with 93 signatures from the students that said that they are not gonna play ball and that they want their coach. We also have some kids here now, and we have parents and everything right here now. All of them couldn't be here because a lot of them working. The kids, some of the kids couldn't be here because some of them play on the basketball team, and they got a basketball game. Though all of them would have been here. You cannot say that the teams or that Coach Smith is doing anything different from the rest of them, because the school is small now, they only got 13 kids on the soccer team. They got one extra player over the team, that normally they have to have on the court with the basketball. They don't have a girls' basketball team simply because of the grades, and nobody out there to push them on and help them out. Now, Coach Smith is helping these football players out, and you're gonna tell me you wanna run away? That's unacceptable. Yes. Excuse me, because I had to scribble some notes, 'cause my computer went down, and that's why I'm late, because I was trying to get all this stuff, so then I had to try to scribble some stuff down. But, uh, you know, it's not about me, it's not about us and everything else. We always talk about it, it's about the kids. Now, if you don't, if the guys, if the kids say they're not gonna play, you don't have a football team without the kids. You don't have the kids without the parents. And you don't have a good school relation without the community. Now, saying that, too, you got a 50%, 50% of the coaching and cheerleaders and everything belongs to one organization. Y'all doing studying on that. Now, you want me to bring it up, I'll tell you who it is, too. It don't matter to me, 'cause I ain't scared. Also, since Ms. Higginbotham came down there to South Putnam School, she the one that changed the athletic program. She come down there, she brought an AD with her, which is Athletic Director along with her, and they changed the whole program, and it's been messed up ever since. But I, you know, nobody's saying anything about that, you know? But then you're gonna talk about, we're going in a different direction, what different direction you're going in. You took us in a different direction when you came there. You took us in a different direction when you came there and caused us to play schools that we shouldn't have been playing, doing things that they shouldn't have been doing. You changed the program now, now you wanna change it again? She's had two ADs come down there, and then Dot put them on the board and put them out there so the people can vote on them. She pointed who she wanted to.
Mr. McKinley?
It has been four minutes, I just.
We gave you an extra minute.
Okay, I'm, I'm, okay.
If you'll wrap it up.
Yes, ma'am, I'm gonna wrap it up. I shooo. Also, I wanna tell you about the trophies. We had, she come down, she throw all the trophies out. My daughter can't go back down there and say, hey, y'all seen the trophy that I, look at the trophy I did? I got the trophies, I got some of them, and three other people got trophies where she threw them in the trash. She's a dictator. And I, I don't have time to say all the rest of it.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hey, these boys here, they gonna play.
Okay, next we have Mrs. Josette Dumas, one of my former students. If you'll state your name and address.
Good afternoon, everyone, my name is Josette Dumison, I live at 112 East Lake Street in Palacio, Florida. I'm just here, I'm just started off as to saying that I'm a Panther. Graduated a Panther, my oldest two kids graduated a Panther. I have a son that's in 11th grade, and it's starting to bug me a little bit more because now he's saying that you can go to any school that you want to. He don't wanna attend Palacio High School next year. This will be his senior year. He don't wanna attend because he don't like how things are going out there with the, with the sports program. It's not just because he can play sports, my son has the grades and the academics to go along with all this stuff, too. I'm not the only parent that's concerned, I have some other parents out there, I don't know if they're gonna speak or not. I'm not the only parent that's concerned and wanting to take their kids away from Palacio High School. That's why I'm in this meeting today, because I don't wanna see those kids leave Palacio High School. I want my son to graduate a Panther, but if things can't go the way they need to go, he want, I'll be sending him somewhere else next year. I'm already in the process of seeing which way it's gonna go. Do I let him stay, or do I send him somewhere else? Because what's going on at Palacio High School, I'm not gonna call out names, 'cause I'm sure you have heard of the situations that's going on out there at that school. It really needs to be something done about. You all are gonna lose a lot of kids, I'm being honest. If y'all don't try to come forth and straighten this situation out, a lot of kids will be leaving Palacio High School. And as a parent, I'm standing up here to say, I don't want that to happen. I want my son to graduate a Panther. I did it, my other two kids did. But if I have to send him somewhere else where he'll be happy, then that's what'll happen. I'm not the only kids, you have former kids, you have some kids that's gonna attend Palacio High School, sitting in this meeting because they know what's going on. They're concerned just as well as I am. My son would have been here, but he's at basketball practice. So, a lot of them couldn't come and show they, what they wanna show, because they attended basketball practice. But I speak for a lot of parents, you see some that's already in here. I speak for a lot of parents when I say, y'all gonna lose a lot of kids next year if y'all don't figure out how to straighten certain situations out at that school. And now, as of today, I found out, you can send them anywhere. You don't have to wait, you could just take them and send them. So, that's gonna make it even easier for these kids to leave. I don't wanna see that happen, I promise, I swear, I don't. I'm not a speaker, I don't like talking in front of crowds, but I felt this is something that I needed to do, and I needed to speak up on a pawn, because it, it needs to be straightened out.
You did a fine job, Josette.
Oh, well, thank you, Ms. Crawford, you taught me well, didn't you?
You've done, you've done very well.
You had no, no trouble getting clean across at all. And we appreciate your input.
But I'm serious, please look into that situation, because it's, it's, it's gonna get, it's gonna get serious, where parents are gonna snatch their kids out, and I don't wanna see that happen. I'm sure y'all don't wanna see it happening to other parents that's sitting in the audience.
Ms. Dumas, regardless of, of, I mean, there's been a variety of issues that have been covered. The, the law is very clear, as Mr. Douglas stated, on who really controls who is hired and who is recommended for appointment to certain positions. As a kid in school, I had coaches that I absolutely could not stand, and I had to play for them. But I didn't have a choice, it was either play for these people, and then I had some I worshiped the ground they walked on. So, it's, it is, you have adults that you have good relationships with, and then you may have one that, that you're not, and you're gonna have to, instead of kids being caught in the middle of a bunch of grown-ups fighting, they need to be worried about going ahead and being a part of something good, and I would encourage them to do that. But the options of moving around in counties and through to other counties have been options that have been available for 10 years. I mean, really, it's just a little more. As, when I was, years ago, I worked like Mr. Searcy, I was the superintendent. I've had daddies come in and wanna fight me because their son wasn't getting thrown enough passes in a football game by coach. It's, it is a very strange situation.
My thing with that, Mr. Buck, was not cutting you off.
It's fine, I'm.
My thing is, when you have coaches that allow their coaches to stand up there and curse other coaches out and say all kind of stuff in front of these kids, then you have coaches that say, it's, get, get, get what I'm saying. I can understand that you coached a child, that's totally different. But when you degrade a child, that's totally, that's something seriously different.
That is serious.
And that's what we're hearing that's going on out there to that high school.
But I can assure you, and I, I know the superintendent well enough to know that if that accusation has come to his desk, he has had it investigated or is investigating it, and he will not tolerate that, and we as boards, a board member will not tolerate that, so, you know.
So, maybe y'all need to speak to some of those kids. I said this before in a meeting previously with Mr. Bowlin. The only way you're gonna get to the truth, you need to speak to those kids. Those kids can tell you just what you need to hear. It's kinda emotional, because it's getting frustrating.
Very emotional. Very emotional.
So, I don't want to take my son away from there. But before I let my son indulge in this...
Well, I wouldn't, I wouldn't tell him.
I can't do it.
I do want to say, and you may know this already, even though the legislature has made it to where you can go to any school you want to, there has to be room. And there's no room in the high schools as of right now in St. John's County. There are only... No, there's not. It just came out.
Uh, you can get in if you want to.
There's no room. Um, so, if you're, you know, I just want you to be aware, it may not be as easy as you think it is.
Well, I, and...
But I mean, you may not even be considering St. John's County. I know you don't want to because I know you're a Panther.
Yeah, I don't want to, but as I said before, I let my son, and it's getting emotional because it's getting tiresome.
Yeah.
Looking at these kids, they're not happy. They're not happy. And, and some things like, say, for instance, "Do you mind if I tell what happened to you?" "No." This is his last game. His senior game. He couldn't even walk across the field or he couldn't even play in that game because he attended his aunt's funeral. So, you tell me what is that? He attended his aunt's funeral. He can't get that back. That's gone. That's something he can't get back. This is his senior year.
Oh, so it was during the football practice?
It was during the, he missed football practice because of his aunt's passing. Whatever he attended, he couldn't, he couldn't play or he couldn't walk across the field that night. Am I correct? So, what is that? What type of punishment is men expect for a child? He can't get that back. And before I let that happen to mine... No. No.
Well, I feel like, Mr. Buckles, surely it's being looked into by the principal at Palacio High School.
I just pray my son...
We're just, we're not privy as a board to that kind of information.
Right. I just wanted to say as a public comment, as a board member, our phone numbers are all on the website. We have email. Please, I mean, if I don't, if I haven't been hurt, you know, privy to the information because anytime I've, I had a call last week about something, I called the superintendent right away to ask about it, but I have not have been notified of this. Students, I mean, that's what you are empowered to do. You are the bosses of your school. You're the reason we have money from the state. If you can't sit down, write an email, write a letter how you feel about things, then you're not doing yourself justice.
Don't let us know.
That's, I mean, I'm, I'm just telling you, there's power when you as a parent want to come and speak things that are truth and as a student and as a player and as a, somebody we value. Without a football team, we have no, you know, it'd be really bad. So, I just would ask, invite each football player. There's no reason you can't sit down and write a letter, handwrite it, turn it into the front office. They'll make copies for us. But if we're not informed of things, then we can't tell the superintendent, "Hey, we would actually love for, to look into this. We want to, to find out what the problem is and how to alleviate it." Because all we hear is after the damage is done and you guys transfer. So, be proactive and give us a chance and inform us in letters, written statements. There are things that you have. We have policies in place that give you power in making statements that if these things are really true and you've been done wrongly by people, then there is justice. You've got to give us a chance to take care of that. As players, we value you. We value students. Student athletes, there's nothing harder in the world than you choosing to play a sport and dedicate a lot of time and energy to your academics and your sports. And if we can't know what's going on, I mean, we trust you. If you guys come to us and write letters and make these statements that are true, then we, we can act upon them. And as a parent, you know, encourage your kids.
And Josette, I'm surprised you didn't call me. I've had, I've had one phone call. It wasn't even about football.
To be honest...
But I've heard of like private meetings or meetings going on, but never...
We, a lot of parents don't know what hoops you got to jump through and what you got to do to get certain, your voice heard. So, I coached, I kind of thinking that he start helping us because we was complaining. We was looking for, you know, just for it to be heard. So, with him, it kind of got out there and we start understanding what we had to do, who we had to see and how this had to go for, for our voices to be heard. So...
Okay.
I'm, I know I went over my time.
Well, now, you're, you're fine because we have questions.
We, we do have questions and, and I was, my point to the young people were you're gonna have adults who, you're gonna worship the ground they walk on or you're gonna not be able to stand being around them. And life is that way. You're gonna have to get out there and, and be a part of the team. But sometimes when you have somebody that humiliates you, that is, that is totally irresponsible. And if it did occur, I'm certain that the superintendent will take action. That we may not know what occurred, but he has the rules and regulations he has to follow. I commented to Ms. Crawford and several others in the other office earlier that one of the worst experiences I ever had as an employee was I had a principal tell me I couldn't go to the funeral of someone I'd known my entire life because I lived in a small town and I knew everybody and I'd be going to too many funerals. And I regret to this day that I didn't go to that funeral. And it's just, there are some things that, that are more important than football. And that's one of those things to me, there's gotta be some wiggle room there. And I, I've looked forward to hearing back at some point from the superintendent on, on what his investigation turns out to be. But I'm, I know he can't speak about it in here.
Oh, I know. I understand. I just wanted my voice to be.
I appreciate it. Proud of you.
Thank you. We need involved parents.
Thank you, Josette.
Before you chew on something and it gets too big to, to handle, you call somebody, okay?
Josette, you can call me anytime. You know that.
I'll hold you to that too.
Okay.
So, then my question is answered.
Oh, sorry.
My question is answered. We're not just hearing, but we're doing. You are taking care of it, following up.
Mm-hmm.
And I, I appreciate you sharing the fact that there are certain things that can't be disclosed until everything is done. But we need to assure our constituents, our parents, our students, that it's not just lip service up here because, um, that won't cut it.
Right. We've got to hear from all people involved.
Okay, all right. Just so we're gonna do that and honor that, I'm okay.
All right. The superintendent has given us his assurance.
Okay.
Ms. Gill, you already will. Okay, did somebody say something?
He said, "Did he?"
Really?
He did.
He just said, "Yes." I, I don't know really what else he can say.
Well, legally, he, he can't go into detail in a public meeting about something like that. It's just not until the board attorney gives us...
Okay, moving right along, our last, uh, thing under the public comments section is I would like to introduce to you Mr. Gigi Galloway. If you'll stand, he represents Benchmark Realty, Coldwell Banker Commercial Benchmark. I don't know if I'm saying it right or not. And he has our, uh, the Campbell Building listed. And did you want to introduce your partners or your people or your...
Gigi. Well, first of all, thank you all for allowing us to come here. I know we're not part of the schedule, but, uh, I attend a lot of school board meetings and government meetings. And you know what? No matter what town you're in, they're all about the same, talking about the good for the kids. So, thank you all very much for allowing us. First of all, I wanted to just say, we were, um, through town and we had talked with your attorney and we said we'd like to stop by to introduce our team. Uh, there's no I in team. For thirty-four years, we've always ran a commercial real estate company as a team. Uh, I have Scott Harder with us and Jeff Blas. Uh, Scott and I have been working together for twelve years and Jeff has just retired from SunTrust Bank and he helps us with mortgages and also is helping us with this project. We'll also be using a, a local individual, Sue Paper, um, as, as the person who asked us to, um, who sent this property to us. And also, I'm a CBC franchise. Um, Sue Paper, I believe, is with Exit Realty. And we'll also be using our CBC franchise around this area too. Um, each one of y'all have a card. Uh, we live by Sunset Policy. If you notice, my cell number is on that. Feel free to call me up to 1:00 AM every morning and just give me to about 4:30 or 5:00. Give me about four and a half hours of sleep. You can call me anytime other than between 1:00 and 4:00. If the schoolhouse is on fire, please feel free to call me. But, but we'll be more than glad. Uh, we are exactly about forty-six minutes away. Uh, for thirty years, we, we understand the process of working with, with school boards and government entities. So, we know it's a long process sometimes. We're very well aware of that. And, and, um, like I say, you, you'll have my number. We're interchangeable parts. Um, give me somebody's key contact and we'll make sure you have Scott or Jeff's number.
Okay.
We are, we are twenty-four hours accessible. We look forward to working with you on this property. We think there's a lot of opportunities to help you move that property.
Thank you so much.
Thank you all very much.
Thanks for coming by.
Mr. Galloway, I know that there is an agenda item to approve the, um, sale listing agreement. Are you able to stay for that? Because I know one of the board members had a question. Or would it be better to maybe start some dialogue now?
We're flexible, you know, I mean... My, my dialogue, we can do it now if you want, if it's okay.
I just know Mr. Galloway's schedule, if you had to, uh, leave...
Let's do it now. Yeah, let's not let him stay.
Here's my attitude. We work for y'all, so if y'all want to move it up, we'll do it. If we need to stay, we'll stay. I will tell you that by recommendation of y'all's attorney, we're using a standard Florida bar commercial contract. So, it's not really our contract. It's a standard Florida bar contract.
Well, my only concern and, and it's, it's not a, well, it is, it is a concern. If, if we had an opportunity to, let's say the superintendent decided to, this hypothetically, to make the old Campbell Building into a pre-case center. And he put it up as collateral for a matching grant at what it's valued at, say a million nine. Uh, and we were able to do that, would we be able to extricate ourselves from this contract? Uh, and that's just a hypothetical. Even if it was of some other sort with some other entity, if in the meantime, we have it come up with a price that suits us, there may be a way to, to, to do things differently. And Rick and I have talked and he's, you know, bounces off his brain as well. And I know you, I mentioned it to you as well, Charlie, but that's the only concern I have.
We're, we're working with you as a team.
Okay.
So, we'll be as flexible as we can. We do have a cancellation call, clause. Um, I want to say it was for nine hundred and fifty dollars. That was mainly just for signage and to recover our expenses. Um, we believe our reputation and integrity is more important than a commission. So, if, if there is something, we have to have a give-take relationship. That's why I've been able to stay in this business for thirty-five years. So, we'll work with y'all any way we can.
I have heard excellent things about you and not so sure that we're not distantly related somehow. So, I'm gonna check on that.
Like I told you, I'm, I'm, I'm a Cal Russell's...
I don't, I don't know. Who knows?
But no, I think it addresses that in there. There is a cancellation clause and I'd be the first to tell you, um, we do this with churches of this, an internal situation. We will do it with school boards and government entities. If we can just recover our, our, um, our cost and expenses.
Well, and see, if, if, and my concern, and I, I think Charlie understands and the board probably does too, if, if Superintendent had an idea of something he wanted to do and he wanted to put, uh, had a foundation that had quite a bit of money and they, you know, you put up, a lot of times we put up matching funds like properties or things like that in school systems. If he had a, a, you know, and I think somewhere it had one value at a million nine or a million one, if you had somebody that took one of those and it came out to our advantage, it might be something that we wouldn't want to look at. We don't know that that's gonna fall out of the sky because it hasn't fallen out of the sky in the last year or so.
We're, we're flexible and, um, I think you'll find out if you check any of our credentials and anything, we have worked with school boards in like-kind situations before.
Yeah, I know this is probably an agreement, but is this a, an exclusive agreement?
Yes.
Okay. Which, uh, does everybody understand that exclusive, basically if we were to find a buyer, then we would still be obligated to pay the, um...
Six percent.
Six percent, right.
I get that, yeah.
Well, we would just flip the buyer to him, I would guess.
Right, right.
Yeah, yeah, and they just can't do a lot of work, yeah.
I will also tell you, I mean, I, I don't like to tell you my trade secrets why we're successful, but if you find us a buyer and there's no other broker, we're gonna negotiate that commission south for you. We're, we're, we're not, you know, um...
That makes me feel even better.
We, we need to make money, but if you bring me a buyer that you've worked and you've cultivated, I'm gonna treat you as a co-broker.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Galloway.
Okay, um, maybe I should put some caveats. Might should go to that foundation. Whatever y'all do with it, y'all, no, but we, if you bring us a, a bona fide qualifier buyer and all we gotta do is, is do the due diligence and stuff, it's, it's gonna be treated as a co-broker.
Thank you, thank you.
And as a point of order, I know this is item L two. It doesn't say, it just says listing agreement, doesn't say whether we approve it because I know there's... So, there's a lot of empty spaces on the contract. So, of course, I have a couple of questions. The first one is, did you have any recommendation on the listing price? Because it just says TBD.
On, on y'all's, um, request for proposal, it's, it's for y'all to decide or us to mutually decide. They, y'all did not ask us. We gave you some ranges and some price, but we were not asked to deliver a price.
Okay, so we could get a mutual, is that something you could email the board or...
Look at offers through our attorney, would present them to us, I would think.
But I mean, if he's our listing agent and broker, he's gonna look at comparables. That's his job.
No pun intended, but that, we're gonna have to come up with a benchmark price to throw, to put a price point out there to the general public.
Right, and that's, I mean, that's your...
That's what you'll do, right?
And that's what, that's what we'll do. Well, originally, that's what y'all decided, but I, I was told at the direction of board, y'all were either gonna do it or direct us to do that. And, and I would assume y'all would direct us to come back with you with some parameters of why, why we think this price is gonna be.
Absolutely.
I mean, I, I can, I can tell you right now, um, after we did a complete walkthrough, we haven't been inside the property yet, but after we did a complete walkthrough, you know, that, that property's gonna be, if, if somebody had told you it was one nine... No.
I know, that's why it looks more attractive on a...
If somebody told you, if somebody told you it may be one one, one three, but that property, depending on how long you're gonna have to stay on the market and some things that we have to do in due diligence, might only be a, a five fifty, eight fifty, nine fifty, one one property without, without getting it, you know, do, does it have any asbestos? From looking in the windows, I can tell that the property has been renovated at some point in time. But under that carpet is it wooden floors. Are there asbestos dropped ceilings? Did they do anything to remove the asbestos collars? That building was built in nineteen twenty-nine, nineteen twenty-two. Unless it was asbestos remediation, there could be a hundred, two hundred, three hundred thousand dollars worth of asbestos remediation that needs to be done in that property.
I just wanted to make sure we've reserved certain rights if, if it came available.
No, 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 we...
If somebody said, "Hey, we love your idea and you got some of the worst statistics in the state of Florida, we're gonna give you a million nine since you're putting up a matching number to us and, and that would help us serve kids." There're just, there's just some things there and that was the one thing that I was most concerned about. concerned about.
Remember, we are employed by y'all, we're working for y'all, we work at y'all's direction.
I got it.
Just to let you know, there have been similar properties actually in Daytona Beach, an elementary school, somebody was, it had been, it had been renovated years ago, dropped ceiling, and somebody took it back to the original schoolhouse, chalkboards, wooden floors, and turned it into offices. There's a title company that's 100% full now, they actually did a great job. There's some opportunities, it could be an ALF. Without us being inside, we don't know how much work, but it could be, it could be turned into an office complex, it could be completely renovated to bring back the charm of an old schoolhouse. But with that, I mean, we would be, the number that you need to put on that is strictly up to y'all on that price.
But I feel that you're the expert, you have the comparables, so as far as you meeting with Scott Getchel and John Chastain, getting that, I mean, what is your timeline? We want this thing listed.
No, no, we want to list this, hopefully we'll sign it today, subject to the price, we'll have a price to you, I mean, I could tell you right now what we think, we think we would, we would list it at. I would list it to sell it, and it'd be around 1-1. And I would, I would be prepared to accept anything from 1-1 south.
Just don't go too far south.
Well, depends how long it takes to go south.
It'll depend on the recommendations.
I will tell you, you know, real estate is amazing thing, is what the market will bear.
Exactly.
I definitely feel it should go under a million, I just...
And, and, and just always remember, you can list a property for 1-1, and there's no harm for selling for 895, if that's what somebody brings you.
Well.
Okay. When you get an inspection, somebody who ever buys that building, they're going to know as much, if not more, than your building department knows of everything that is in that building that's going to cost them to either pull out or to renovate.
Well, this is new business, do we need to make a motion?
I have one more question.
I think we should wait to vote on it, but I didn't know if there were any other questions from Mr. Galloway.
We're just doing the discussion now, while he was still here.
All right.
I just feel that a two-year, two-year broker, that's a pretty long time.
In commercial real estate, I just listed a property for three years.
So, there's no...
The average absorption rate on commercial real estate right now is 18 to 36 months. This is not a house.
Right, I just, right.
There's, you know, if you want to feel comfortable, cause you've got a heartburn of two, and we go 18 months or something like that, but I need to go more than one, because the, I'm going to tell you right now, I am not a miracle worker.
Right.
Okay?
Okay.
But I will tell you this, I don't get paid, nor do these gentlemen get paid, to list property. We only get paid to sell a property, okay? So, but who's us not to sit back and say, oh, we got that property on Palacca? Our objective is to try to sell that property within the first 90 to 120 days. So, I mean, you know...
I'd like to see a listing of under a million. Nikki mentioned that a minute ago.
995 or 990, you know, what you're doing right now is you're, you know, we're picking, we're getting three cantaloupes for a dollar or four cantaloupes for a dollar.
Right.
Whoever's going to buy that property is going to tell you what they're going to pay for it. So if you came in and listed at 795, you're going to start hitting 500,000.
Yeah.
So I mean, you, we could list it for 975, 980, that's whatever the magic number you want.
I think these guys are going to be putting it out there, I mean, it'll be up to us what we take. They know more to do, I mean, if they're going to list it, they can bring it to us at that price, and if we like it, we could vote on it, and if we don't like it, we don't have to vote on it.
We do need to set a price point. I mean, I would recommend then 975, 995.
995.
Yeah, let's do 995.
You know, it's 31, 1935, almost 36,000 square feet. It is a large building, y'all know that. There's a lot of stories in that building. I mean, I'm talking about a lot of secrets in that building, a lot of spankings in that building.
You weren't supposed to bring that up.
No, no, but, but the point, those are the funny stories. What we don't know is how that building was built in 1929, and what they did to it in 1935, and what they did to it in 1942, with product materials that you, that you have to pull out today. So that, you know, and none of us have that knowledge.
At that day in time, it was their top of the line, like that.
Okay, well, appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
All right, y'all have my card, I'm serious, we, the Sunset policy, we return calls within 24 hours.
We just called you GG.
Those are the nicest things I've been heard in my life. Thank y'all very much.
Thanks again.
Okay, let's move on to our consent agenda. I'll start with Ms. Jorgensen, would you like to pull anything?
No, thank you.
I don't want to pull anything.
I, it's a NEFAQ question, I five. Sorry, you guys, I know you're usually...
Five?
Yeah.
Mr. Buckles?
No, ma'am.
No. Gilyard? Okay.
Purchase and sale agreement.
Okay, we're pulling I five from the consent...
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda minus I five.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so it passes, and now, do I have to hit this thing again? All right, we're going to talk about I five.
And I, I'm sorry to put you guys on the spot, but it, this is a very interesting, it's on behalf of NEFAQ, it's purchase and sale agreement between the school board, but it's a really interesting consultant services, that it's a school board policy program. So I wasn't sure if that incorporates the things we're doing at Neola, because I looked at the documents, and there were several really amazing graphs and strategic plans, and a lot of those things, that I just didn't know if that incorporates just for NEFAQ, or is that a school, Putnam County School Board, or all your consortium counties included with that district?
First of all, my name is Mark Bracewell, I'm the manager of leadership programs at NEFAQ. And to answer your question, this contract is for model board policies for all of the NEFAQ districts, and actually, this, these policies are used by over 30 districts in the state of Florida. There are model board policies, and really what the service is about, and what we're purchasing, is the proprietary rights to this content that's been developed over 30 years. And what the purpose of that is, is for two times a year, when new legislation comes down, or new laws need, are enacted that affect schools, we have model board policies that our districts can use to formulate their own school board policies after. And so it's kind of a cost-saving and a time-saving measure for our districts to be able to pattern their own policies after these policies, to ensure that they are in compliance with state law at the time it's, it goes, it comes down.
So the company, EMCS, would you compare that to the one we use with Neola? Or no?
Without knowing anything about Neola, I couldn't, I wouldn't be able to answer that.
It just, it seems, it seems...
That's what we had all the years, before we went with Neola, that's what we had for the district.
So NEFAQ...
We've got our policy updates through NEFAQ.
Okay.
Mr. Jerry Copeland, who owns the EMCS, is retiring. And so, and your documents reflect that, and basically what we're doing is we're buying the proprietary rights to the content, so that we can provide, so that now NEFAQ can provide this service, and do the updates, and he's going to, he's going to stay on for nine update cycles, which amounts to the rest of this year, and, and eight more, eight more cycles, to be able to train us to, to undergo this process on behalf of our districts, and any others that want to contract with us to do this work.
So, your districts would pay you to update our policies?
Instead of paying Jerry Copeland, we'd be paying NEFAQ, and Jerry's been an outstanding leader in this across the state of Florida, for many, for decades, and I think...
HR wizard, he really is.
You guys pick up his, his company, and you will have something.
And we're paying for his expertise and the development, all the bugs are worked out of this, everything is ready to go, and we're also paying for his expertise for a period of time to train us how to, how to embark in this process on behalf of our districts.
Well, I know Neola's all over the United States, correct? Neola's all over the United States, would you, I mean, is this just for Florida, just for our districts?
We would use it primarily for our, the districts in our service area, and then there are others, usually small rural districts in the state, who use Mr. Copeland's service through EMCS, and we would, we would be interested in contracting with him if they desired to do that. But our primary focus would be for the districts first in our service area, as it always is, including Putnam.
The, the, the machine that generates the descriptions throughout most of Florida would be coming from right here in Putnam County, and it would be NEFAQ, so...
That's right.
That would be, that would be a good thing.
Absolutely.
So you're buying the company for 225,000?
Not really buying the company, because he has other interests as well, we're just buying the proprietary rights to the content of the model board policies.
And then you will solicit your districts to purchase that?
They will contract with us to provide the updates, the yearly updates twice a ye, or not yearly, but by annual updates.
All right.
Okay?
Thank you very much.
Other questions?
That's a good idea, Mark, probably, yeah.
Thanks for explaining that, appreciate that. I make a motion to approve item I five.
Second.
I've got a second from Mr. Galloway.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is approved.
Sandra did.
Sandy did, I think. Okay, so now it's time for us to go into emergency session, out of regular session.
Did I scare you?
He did.
Well, he always scared me.
Oh, okay.
Okay, the first item, we have a lot of emergency items, I'm sorry to say, this time. Okay, so we need to vote with this first one, correct? Because we've already had discussion, is that, are we voting now?
Oh, with L? No, go down to that one.
Okay, so go here, okay, I'm looking in the wrong place. Okay, the first one is 2016, 2017 personnel allocations, change in number 13, 13-5 through 13-6, justification, explanation, time sensitive.
Normally, we just kind of delete one and add one, so are we definitely adding brand-new positions, or are they being re...
Is Debbie here to...
Transformed.
It's not, it's Rhonda, never mind, I did this last time, Debbie, maybe one day I'll learn.
Can I make a motion to approve?
Oh, duh.
And then we can have discussion?
Yeah.
I'd like to make a motion to approve that item, and if we get a second, then we can discuss whether you want to vote for it.
Second, and then discussion.
Is there any discussion?
Sorry, it just was Department of Purchasing, and add a secretary, and then Transportation, add an executive secretary, so I just...
They are going to be two, Deborah Dekubellis, Staff Services, there will be two additional allocations that we are requesting today, then two allocations will come off once those employees go into those new, so it will be a watch.
Yeah, I usually see the flip-flop in that.
I know, yeah, I know. Can't do that until we move everybody, and then they will come back to you who's coming off.
Okay, perfect, thank you for clarification. That's okay. Okay.
We have made a motion in a second, so all in...
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is approved. Okay, the next one is use of DA school needs funds for school improvement to provide tutors at Mosley Elementary School, justification, explanation, time sensitive.
Madam Chairman, I make a motion, we approve.
Second. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I have a question, it says it's coming out of general fund.
Oh, I thought it was, it said DA funds.
It says DA school needs funds.
I know, but here the core strip is general fund.
Yes, this is out of general dollars that were targeted for school improvement of schools that are in need, as Mosley is. We had been advised by the DA that we need to prove that we are adding additional support to these schools. And the schools had the opportunity to select what they believed would be most impactful for student achievement, so that they can...
Target.
Target specific students, and tutoring is what they feel will be the most beneficial.
So it's...
Thank you.
Sorry, it's just in the general fund, but...
It says special project.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I've been forgetting to say that. It has been approved. Okay, next overnight trip for Interlocken High School FFA to Haynes City, Florida, justification, explanation, time sensitive.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Approved. Next, this one is a student is attempting to enroll at Palacca High School for the second semester of the 2016-2017 school year, justification, explanation, time sensitive.
So moved.
Second.
This is the student that was expelled from another county?
This is the student that was expelled from Clay County, and is trying to enroll at Palacca High School.
Wow. I met with Mr. Stout, and he assured me that this student was, well, they are attempting to circumvent, they have not paid the cost for making that mistake, they're trying to get around it.
And it's been our, it's been our policy to recognize the actions of other districts.
And that policy is attached.
Yes, and so we...
Well, then, I'm under the understanding that superintendent's going to make the recommendation, this is your recommendation, is correct? I don't have a problem with it, because Clay County has taken kids that we have expelled before in lieu of the punishment in Putnam.
Is this why you don't make the motion before the discussion, by the way?
I've seen it, you know.
Now we have a motion to approve, and he might not want to.
We don't want to approve this.
No, we're not wanting to approve of this.
Yeah, we don't want...
Yeah, I'm not approving this.
David made a motion to...
Well, hold on, a student attempting to enroll, okay, attempting to enroll. I rescind my motion, because I interpreted that to a student was enrolling at Palacca High from another county, so...
We're recommending to honor the expulsion.
The expulsion, that can be done either way, it's up to the board, and I agree with the superintendent, I rescind my motion.
I will make a motion that we do not approve this.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The motion has been approved. Who's second?
Sandy.
Actually, the recommendation is to uphold the suspension, so a motion probably needs to be made to uphold Clay County's suspension.
I'll amend the motion to say that we, I make a motion we uphold the suspension from...
I'm sorry, expulsion.
Expulsion, from Clay County.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? We finally got it right. Okay, and then item five is an overnight trip by QI Roberts, junior, senior high art students, justification, explanation, a clerical error.
I make a motion, we approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It has been approved. Okay, we'll go back into regular session. And we are under discussion, there is no unfinished business, but we do have some new business. We need to select a board member to serve on the Keep Putnam Beautiful Board.
Oh, I was going to say, I would like to, but...
Okay, go, no, go ahead, you do it.
Okay, I was going to volunteer.
I'd like to make a motion that we select Ms. Sandra Gilyard for that, and any other roles that we deem fit for her as the year progresses.
Don't go along with that.
Well, for Keep Putnam Beautiful.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You are a Keep Putnam Beautiful person.
Yay.
And so, they will be contacting me once you get them the information.
You'll get with Pam, there's, there's an event coming up pretty soon.
Have we done this before?
Okay, we've been, my community has already been involved in it, we do the cleanup, so...
They're doing, Miller Middle doing a garden, so that'll be good, they've been working with Mr. Getchel, so that'll be great.
Yeah.
I want to see that.
Yeah.
Okay.
He sees me all the time.
And we can skip the, no, we got to vote. Listing agreement with CBC Benchmark for Campbell Building. So moved.
Second.
And just for the discussion, if I can add that we will include the offering price of 995,000, and if in the motion, you can add whether a contingency is needed for the description that Mr. Buckles gave, for a like-kind contribution, or for use as collateral for the acquisition of a grant, we can draft some language in the final terms section of the contract, or if you're satisfied with Mr. Galloway's assurance to you, we can, we can handle it either way. I kind of like to have things in writing, so if you, if you want to do what Mr. Buckles has recommended, I would ask that that be communicated in the motion.
And I think that he mentioned something about like a $950 fee, is that how you understood it?
Yes, it's actually a $2,500 fee that he's requesting in the paragraph 11, but we, what I'm going to do is, and I have to thank Ed Hetstrom from our firm for negotiating this contract with Mr. Galloway to this point, but in paragraph 14 on the last page, under additional terms, we will write out Mr. Buckles' concern about a potential grant, and how that will be structured, and that we will pay, the school, the school board will pay Mr. Galloway's costs, like for the signs, and so with the marketing, plus the cancellation fee.
And it's, it is strictly business, that if someone did come in and see Mr. Paget with some of these calls, or with the superintendent concerning some of the vocational trends we've got, that someone could say, well, there is this grant, if you've put up, it will match it, even if it's facilities, or land, or whatever, and it's conceivable that superintendent could come up with a matching grant of 1.1 to 1.9, or whatever he gets, and it may be much more attractive to us to do something like that, so we'll, So we'll wait and see where that goes. But I would like to see that caveat in there, but that's...that's you guys.
I have no idea what to say in a new motion.
Do you want to do the motion?
Maybe I can help. It's the same. Mr. Douglas? That we can breach the agreement if, for purposes of grant matching, we need to use the building instead of selling the building.
That is correct. That is correct.
Okay, that's my motion. Is there a second?
I second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The motion has been approved.
And to clarify, we did agree to $995 to start the selling price?
Yes.
You mentioned... I like the way you did that, Ms. Jorgensen. Okay, number three, Consensus to Advertise New Policies. Number 1419.03, number 2215, number 3419.03, number 4419.03, number 6605, and number 9200 per Neola Update 17-1.
I move we approve.
No, it's advertise.
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 Advertise, roll call.
Second. Say advertise.
Advertise, aye.
In second. All right, number four, Consensus to Advertise Updates to Bylaws, number 0154, 0156, and Policies, number 1130, 1419, 1419.02, 2370.01, 2431, 2431.01, 3128, 3130, 3419, 3419.02, 4419, 4419.02, 5460, 5465, 5610.05, 5780, 5830, 8800, 9700, and 9800.
Advertise.
Advertise.
Advertise, but I just want to make a comment if I could. I got ahead, you know, I wanted to start reading these because we're going to approve them. And on number four, 0156 wasn't attached. It would...just check for me, because it wasn't.
Okay.
I couldn't find it.
She can see it too, Miss. Okay.
On one, but I don't see it listed on here. 5350, Student Suicide Prevention.
Was that pulled?
No, no, no. I was just...I was just saying, I read it, and it said the counselors will do such-and-such and training. And I...again, I just want to make sure that these people know that they are expected to do these things. Think one of Helen's things she's going to do this summer with the media liability, she...I think it was yours, somebody's. I've read so many. It stated that the principal, the administrators are going to receive the training the summer, then they in turn will turn around and train. So we just need to make sure with the suicide prevention because it is real, and we need to make sure that these counselors get what they need in order to be successful at it, because...
Okay.
But it's not on here, but it was on my agenda.
It's 40.
Fifty-three, fifty. I don't know.
Fifty-three, fifty?
Yeah, I don't know where it went.
Deborah Shepherd did something with it, I'll bet you.
No, I read.
I apologize, this is my mistake. We really need to add 5350 to Item Number L4, the consensus to advertise. It was included in the documentation, but I missed putting it actually in the item itself.
So it was there for us to read?
Right.
Okay. So do we need to...
Just say consensus to advertise, including that. That's all we need.
consensus to advertise, including 5350.
Advertise.
Advertise.
Okay, it's now time for our board reports. I'll start with Ms. Jorgensen.
I really don't have anything to report, but I am excited about some of the things going on. The play is going to be just adorable. Sandy and I will be at the Financial Forum. And, oh, gosh.
Hey, it's a thrill. I went last year, and it was a thrill a minute, I can tell you.
Well, I'll tell you, this will be my fourth time going, and I still don't understand any of it, almost.
I gave up after my second time.
But we'll be there, but we can go Friday night to this one here with all the kids and E.H. Miller sign language and all that. We'll be able to go to the Friday night one. And then there was something else I put on my calendar this morning that I'm excited about, but I'll tell you what it was after I go. I'm done.
Um, I did want to try to attend the January 20th. Jenkins has a career day, correct?
I wrote that down here.
Yeah, that looks great. I'm excited about that, and I appreciate the staff there going and outreach-ing to give these opportunities to kids because they really...it impacts them when they see real community members and different entities into their school, coming into their habitat and making a, you know, change that they can. And then also January 24th, the Teacher and a Support Person of the Year. I just always, every time I listen to that presentation, I get all teared up thinking how hard these teachers and support staff work and reading those wonderful things people say about them. So again, thank you HR for doing such a great job. I'm looking forward to that banquet and honoring all these hard-working employees we have. Again, that's something that we can't say thank you enough, but we do appreciate our employees. And then when we get to recognize all the great things they do, it just makes, I think, all the board members really excited and thankful that we have such great, dedicated employees. So, thank you.
Mr. Buckles?
Um, I made a call the other day, or I called the Superintendent briefly about a question about chain link fencing and wire. And I texted Scott. Did you get my text on the...I sent a text about some of the chain link wire we have up at some of our schools to see if there's any way to have that redipped? Or is there no way to do that? Okay, well, I was just...no, I was talking about Scott. Scott Gettle, not this guy. Oh, bring him up here, Kirk? Is that what you're saying? Oh.
You didn't listen to me when I read my little...
Uh, well, Kirk's a little different. You never know where Kirk's coming from. My only question was if that wasn't...I thought we might have a way of dipping that again or re-coding it. But if that's not the case...
We had to take it down to do that, and once you did that, it wouldn't be worth putting back up. I mean, I know Don, you know, we've got Don Paget, and he does our score fencing and all that. But for what that stuff costs, it'd be so labor-intensive.
I know we've got a lot of wire up, but it just looks so rusty in bed around Jenkins and some at the high school and stuff. And I know you got to piecemeal it and do what you can, when you can. And but I didn't know if there was a way to do that, and that's...if you got my text, and obviously you didn't.
I'm sorry, I did not, I apologize.
Okay, well, that's good for that. The other doesn't involve Scott. It just...I mentioned the options on the building. I felt that was a good avenue to possibly look at. And I think Superintendent agrees. He's, you know, he's kind of walked into this thing, and we've all had...we've been sitting on this building for a while. And, you know, there may become a way that we can use this to bring in a lot more money than what we're going to be offered. And I just would hate to see us box ourselves in and not be flexible enough that we could look a gift horse in the mouth and do something really fantastic. So that was the only question. And then you talk about the play, Kathy. Two of the little moonlings were my twin granddaughters. And I listened to a gentleman say something, and he comes to these meetings and hears us when we talk about wanting to go see our granddaughters do things. But you know what?
What it's all about.
I love the kids, so I wouldn't be here if it wasn't about children. And when I get a chance to watch my grandchildren, I'm watching a lot of others at the same time. Anyway, I look forward to Mr. Cerency getting back with us on coaches that maybe sometimes get a little too far in what they require and trying to maybe... If that did in fact occur, that they put a little more...
A little abuse.
A little more heart in that. And I think that he will have good success in that. So that concludes my report.
Ms. Gilliard. All right, and just going to mention our retreat. I see we have retreated to one day now.
Yeah, we retreat, yes. And Mr. Buckles is so happy.
So that's okay. And I just want to reiterate what Mr. Buckles said and what Nikki said in regards to honoring our employees, showing them that we do appreciate them, you know. Their colleagues are there, their family are there. And then they look, and no board members are there. So it would be a great gesture on our part if we were to show up. And then to with the coaches, I remember the conference that they paid to send us to. And one of the things they told us, Rick, that we are to be in the tower, watching for smoke. And we need to tell you that there's smoke in the South Forty, and you need to go look into it. So I know if you have given me your word that you're going to diligently look into that. And I understand what Charlie said.
Not to be specific, but whenever we get complaints about that, the first person I call is the principal. Make sure the principal addresses that.
Okay, all righty.
Generally speaking, that's how we deal with that.
Okay, and I appreciate that because we're servants. We may be the board, but we're servants.
And we need to listen to all sides.
Yes, we're entrusted with, you know, handling the business of this district. And the last thing we want is for them to lose faith...
Absolutely.
...in us as a group that are working for the best interest of the community, being our children at the center of it.
Okay. Okay, I guess it's my turn. First thing I'd like to say is I had the honor of moderating the Spelling Bee again at Browning Pierce Elementary School. And I just have to give props to Ashley McCool. That school, the campus is beautiful. She is so energetic and out and about and among all the students. Those kids are so precious. But the thing that struck me the most awesome was the head custodian at that school. When I got there and I was going in to go in the front office, and he was standing there, he greeted every child, every adult, and he knew like their names. He was just wonderful. He's like this great PR guy for Browning Pierce Elementary. And Pam found out his name. For me, his name is Mr. Richard Austin, so...
But the kids call him Bob the Builder.
Bob the Builder, okay, well...
And he is a celebrity.
He's wonderful.
He is wonderful.
He's a great guy.
He's great, very dedicated to his...
Okay, and on that note, the countywide Spelling Bee is on the 27th, so we will have representatives from each of our schools at the countywide. And I'm going to tell you, that's some impressive kids with those big words. Also, again, Sandy brought it up, but the retreat will only be one day, Mr. Buckles, at the Hampton Inn. And we're going to have plenty of snacks and coffee and sharing. Ms. Cormaney has volunteered to cook for us. And I don't know if y'all know, but she is an amazing cook. And the best part, she's making her fresh apple cake. Which if you've never had that before, it all...
I'm on pins and needles.
I know you are. You'll rush right down there. And we're lucky, we're going to have Tina Picasin, who represents FSBA, is going to be there to help us guide our agenda and help us with some things and do some teen builders. Casual. Some teen builders, Mr. Buckles.
There's no Iron Team, I get it. I was a coach.
Okay, the last thing I want to mention is I have heard from two people in the community that Putnam Edge was not accredited. I don't know if anyone has...if it's even true or not. I do know that there have been, I think, at least six students moved to Palaca High School. Some could have moved to Interlock, and some could have moved to Crescent City. I don't know, I only heard about the Palaca High. And several were seniors because they were afraid, you know, if they graduate and get a diploma from there, they'd still need to get a GED to attend college. So I...
I met with Ms. Parsons earlier today, just on my normal visit. And we did discuss their upcoming site visit for their accreditation. They have not finished the process yet, but they are in the process of seeking accreditation.
So we don't...so we don't know why this mass exodus, then?
No, ma'am. She said there are some that have made the decision to go back to Palaca High School. She did not go into the reasons why they chose to go back.
Bigger than the normal one every...
I know of six for sure, but I don't know if there are going to be more. Yes, ma'am.
It would be fear of not having the diploma count.
Sure, okay. All right, well, I just, you know, wanted to make sure that we, as a board, we're doing what our due diligence there. Mr. Douglas?
Things are going well in the legal department, and I'm glad we're getting this contract for the sale of the Campbell Building underway. I know it's been a long time coming. And hopefully, they will find a buyer sooner rather than later. And I'll definitely keep you updated with any developments that we hear from them.
Thank you. Dr. Cerency?
This must be the month for retreats. I just got back from a retreat, the NEFAC Board of Directors Retreat recently in Fernandina Beach, and it was very informative. Tough assignment, but we did.
Somebody's got to do it.
But that brings up a question I want to ask the board. The Superintendents from NEFAC and the other two consortia will be attending a legislative meeting in Tallahassee on February 21st, which is a board meeting date. And we'll be meeting with legislators and, you know, people about the upcoming session. I'm going to ask for your consideration if you might consider changing that board date, board meeting date, to February 23rd, which is Thursday, if that is something you'd be willing to entertain.
No problem for me. I guess I can put off leaving for Sting Hatchie. Yeah, it's fine with me.
Making a short meeting.
What? I'm sorry, the 21st is when?
21st is a Tuesday, and move that to the 23rd.
But is it something we need to attend?
No, 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 that would just be me.
No, that's him.
Oh, okay.
But he would be here for the board meeting.
So he wants the board meeting changed.
Got you.
If that's work...
Do we have to vote on that, or can we just say that's fine?
I think we have to vote on it.
No.
No?
Because we approved the meeting dates.
Yeah.
So if we change it, my...
Well, just to be sure...
Just to be sure, I think it would be good to vote so we can properly notice it.
Rick, you could do it by phone, or you could have Thomas do it.
Okay, I make a motion that we change the board's meeting date from February 21st to February 23rd, same time.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? We will change it.
Please Pam email us and Sharon.
Yes, because...
That's what makes me nervous.
Thank you for doing that.
We'll all be here on Tuesday.
One additional thing I want to bring up...
I'll do that, what I did to the budget meeting.
Again, I want to thank all of you for coming to the board workshop. Was that last Monday? We had a board workshop on our CTE programs, and we talked about a lot of the programs that are going on in all of our high schools. Renee and Tanya did a great job presenting that.
They sure did.
In the meantime, today, our board attorney and myself went to visit the new superintendent in St. John's County along with their board attorney. And we had a very productive meeting and talked about the future of First Coast Tech and, you know, how the needs of our students are being met as far as career and technical education, both at the secondary level and post-secondary. So we had a very good meeting. We are in the process of discussing options. We are also talking with St. John's River State College as a possible partner in helping us to provide post-secondary opportunities. So I just want to mention that we do not have a formal agreement right now with either one of them. I know that we've, you know, we're talking about the lease and that type thing. But they were very encouraging about how we can work together to provide career and technical education for all of our students. And of course, you know, they're providing services for adults here, too. So they are serving a purpose here, FCTC. So we don't want to come in and just say, "Okay, everybody leave, or we're going to take over." That's not the point. We want to see how all three entities can provide services for our local citizens. So just...we'll keep you updated on that, but I thought our meeting today was very productive.
Great, good, thank you.
Good news.
Also, I did see Jenkins is having a neat civics quiz show tomorrow morning from 9:35 and 10:10 in the front parking lot at Jenkins.
I like that.
Yeah, that's what I said.
I bet it's like Jeopardy or something.
So I did want a service announcement, it looks like fun.
I think it's at 10:00. District-wide, 10 o'clock. Thank you. Okay, well, if that's all, we are adjourned.
Done.